Good evening and welcome to the abridged version of the city council today. We have three counselors traveling for a conference and hopefully we'll have Alan Zelenka here in a little while.
So this is actually not yet a complete meeting of the city council, but we can all sit around and talk.
It's just a group of us, not an actual meeting. Don't confuse this with an actual meeting.
Yeah, this is not an actual meeting, but it's going to be a nice conversation.
We've actually thought about having this up in the little lunch area, just, but anyway, thank you all. It is June, today is June 25th.
All day long and as far as I can see.
Wow, June 25th, okay. So first up is committee reports and items of interest. Is there anyone who wants Sinclair, anybody else? Okay, take it away Claire.
Thank you, well, thank you Mayor. So actually, rather than an item of interest, I wanted to take a moment to share, take a moment of personal privilege. The American Cancer Society recently updated its recommendations for when people should get preventive colon and rectal cancer screenings, lowering the recommended age to 45 from 50. So I'd like to take this moment of personal privilege to speak about my own cancer diagnosis in hopes that it will prompt people to take these recommendations seriously. Two years ago, on June 20th, 2016, I received the news that I had a stage III rectal tumor. It was discovered during a colonoscopy. This was just nine months past my 50th birthday. If I had delayed that screening even a couple of months, I likely would have received a much worse diagnosis and would not be here now to share this urgent message. I've been reluctant to speak in public in any detail about the specific cancer I had because of the extremely personal nature of this cancer and my own desire to keep my medical issues out of the public eye. Now that I am past the worst of my treatment and its side effects, I feel better able to share this news and hope to raise awareness about the need to get prompt screenings. It could save your life as it saved mine. I appreciate the opportunity to share this message here today, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing that message. That is a life-saving message and I appreciate your stepping out. It takes some courage to step out and share a medical episode like that. And we are very glad to have you back in fine fettle here at the city council, so thank you for that. Any other comments? I want to, I have two quick things. One is just a little reminder, we were invited, a counselor and mayor, to join the sister city Kakagawa trip to Japan. Nobody has signed up. I'm assuming that's because no one feels free to do that at this time, but just a little reminder, right, it's, it takes time and money. So just that reminder. And then I just wanted to add also a comment of gratitude to the 17 mayors who went to the border last week to protest the administration's immigration policy and detainment of families and separating parents and children, and gratitude to our federal delegation to Senators Wyden and Merkley and Representative Ozio for stepping up for families and pressing the administration. It's been a very painful couple of weeks and so I'm glad to see the outpouring and I'm glad to see the leadership at a national level stepping up. So just wanted to add that comment. Okay, I think that takes care of that and we are ready for the first and only order of business today.
Thanks Mayor, and I'll invite the chief to come on up and give us an update.
Well, good evening. It is an absolute pleasure to be here again. It feels like we've had lots of time together and which I really, which I really appreciate. And I really appreciate the workshop atmosphere because I feel like we can have just a great conversation about what's going on and what we're paying attention to downtown and throughout the city and kind of what we can look towards as we continue to build strategies that I think make us a safer and more livable city. So we're going to, we're going to talk a little bit about that. I will recognize that it's always nice when the Eugene Police Department makes up 50% of the entire crowd in attendance. And so we, we travel heavy in EPD and I brought, I brought my backup just in case, just in case I needed some. So my point is, is that if you want to get down in the weeds and have some tough questions that maybe I don't have all the details, I brought the detail folks with me and they've just been, done a fantastic job of supporting me as we've kind of moved through this. And they, they have forgotten more than I'll ever know in the first nine weeks that I've, that I've been here. So feel free to leverage that brain power that we brought with us. So talk a little bit about what's going on downtown with regards to public safety. And so I'm going to go through these real quick and then love to get to the dialogue that you're interested in having. I know that we don't need to stop here and visit this slide, but you understand that this is kind of what frames the discussion about some of the things that we're dealing with downtown. And, you know, while some of this behavior isn't necessarily criminal, I think that it's becoming pervasive enough that people are having more and more dialogue about how we manage things that are happening downtown. And certainly, the lower right-hand corner, I think articulates some of the issues we're seeing in the downtown core and in our parks and along our bike paths with regards to some of the illicit drug use and the disposal of the needles, which is always something that we're, we're very, very concerned about. Old problems and new responses. Some of these are not going to be necessarily new responses, but I think the point here is, is that we are reframing this response a little bit. There's a renewed sense of energy that I feel, not only in the city and with city leadership and city downtown business leaders and other neighborhood leaders around, around the city, but I think there's a new energy within the police department that has given us a new opportunity to look at this a little bit different. And I think I'm excited about what we're seeing. And some of the things that we're doing now is summers out for our SROs and we've repurposed our SROs downtown to help, to help meet our needs. That is, that is a resource that is generally the nine months out of the year specifically dedicated to our schools, but in the summer months, we have the ability to repurpose them in some different areas, understanding that that's also when they take their vacations so we don't have them all summer. But they have graciously been a part of our operational strategy, which I think is important to include.
Not all of the public knows what a SRO is.
I'm sorry, School Resource Officer, thank you. Our School Resource Officers are repurposed downtown and Sergeant Nelson was their supervisor and so he's, he's the plus one from the sergeant's rank that we've tried, that we've moved downtown to help Sergeant Julie Smith with kind of the seven-day-a-week coverage and the accountability and just setting the tone for what we're trying to do with the downtown officers. We're trying to, we're planning on adding a sergeant fall of 2018 full-time because we really recognize downtown needs seven-day-a-week coverage from a supervisory perspective. If there's two things that a police department needs to make sure they do really, really well, that's first-level supervision and training. Those are the two things that keep us out of hot water bar none. And so when you, when you talk about what's going on downtown and understanding that you're asking a single person to supervise the span of control from seven days a week, she just can't do it. And she's a good one and I don't want to burn her out and I want to keep her where she's at and engaged and happy. And so part of that has given her a little bit of help. And so that's when we talk about better sinking our efforts downtown, that consistent approach to first-level supervision is really, really important. Crime prevention is fully engaged in downtown. Now, these are some examples of some things that you see happening downtown purposefully that give us a really strong footprint, but the piece of this that is happening in addition to this is repurposing our crime prevention specialists on some overtime basis downtown, on foot, walking around, engaging business leaders in dialogue and business owners in dialogue and just spending time talking about how we can create an environment that is safer for everybody down there. And just that visibility is really good. So we are really ramping up our crime prevention efforts. And part of why I'm stopping on this slide is to, is to put an exclamation point behind enforcement is not the answer to everything that we're dealing with. It's a piece of it. It is certainly a piece of it, but not the answer to everything. And preventing crime is really the way we want. Kristi Hammett talks oftentimes when we're talking about community justice is the off-ramps and how, how we take advantage of the off-ramps. Where if we get to a place where they don't even have to worry about the off-ramps, that's, that's a good place we want to be with preventing crime. Night shift patrol helping, we have, we have, right now, we, if we are over minimums on patrol, that those, that, that coverage that, or the overage that we see on patrol is repurposed downtown or an emphasis downtown, so we're trying to get more officers downtown from our regular patrol. And so I think that's really advantageous, especially in our evening hours where coverage seems to be pretty thin with our downtown officers. That patrol's been picking up some slack when we are at, when we're above minimums, which isn't very often based on staffing, but when we are, we're putting them where they need to be. And that's what a just and reliable department does is recognize where they need to be and if you have extra resources is that we try to repurpose them downtown. So we're seeing more patrol help downtown from, from our regular patrol function. CSOs is a big, are a big piece of what we do, CSO's A, B, and C's. The As are the street CSOs, the ones that respond to calls for service that don't necessarily have a suspect, cold burglaries, cold thefts, those types of things. We've recognized some advantages to having them downtown, not only from a visibility standpoint because of the way, the uniforms they wear, but oftentimes there's maybe some, some criminal behavior or criminal investigations they can help with that free up the police officers to deal with some of the more serious things that we're seeing. And the CSO As can help us kind of bridge that gap with, with the need downtown and doing some of the low-level investigations. So we're, we're putting more CSOs downtown as well. In addition to that, we're having detectives work on a case-by-case basis. We're working on some special operations downtown that are targeting some of our predatory sex offenders that we think are preying on those homeless youth. We're going to be running some, and I'm not bashful at all about announcing to the world that we will be running some undercover plainclothes operations to try and help people think twice about being downtown and engaging this kind of behavior and doing those investigations. We're also going to be doing some narcotics enforcement downtown because we're seeing some open drug use and, and possession and distribution of narcotics that I think we need to pay attention to downtown. So detective assistance on a case-by-case basis is coming. Good collaboration with juvenile P&amp;P, with some of our juvenile offenders down there is going to be important. And then the downtown ambassadors will be a piece of that that are, that are on their way.
And what's P&amp;P?
I'm sorry, parole and probation.
Thank you.
Now I know, now I know how you feel when all these acronyms that you don't know. Yeah, juvenile parole and probation is a strong collaboration with, with juvenile offenders downtown. Traffic Enforcement Unit, so TEU, which is Traffic Enforcement Unit, you would think of them on motorcycles, out on our interstates and streets and doing, writing tickets and doing traffic enforcement. We've repurposed them to be downtown in pairs. If nothing else, the visibility is important. They're doing some minor traffic enforcement downtown because it's a little more difficult. You don't have the speeds downtown, but you certainly have a lot of conflict between traffic and pedestrians and that's something we want to pay attention to. I've had an overwhelming response from people that have sent me emails saying, "We love seeing the traffic guys downtown." Everybody loves traffic guys, okay? That's just the bottom line. But they love, they love seeing the motorcycles downtown, they love seeing them stop in, just the visibility, some of the minor enforcement that they're doing, I think is really important. It sends a strong message about what's important to us and that's what they do. Station Manager Kelly Putnam, who is down there, we are creating us, an environment where we're bringing some resources to free her time up to be more of a program manager, which is what her role is in the downtown core, to connect with local businesses on a programmatic basis instead of just sitting in an office and doing clerical work or doing administrative work. And so we're trying to get her out in the community. I think that's what she wants to do, she's good at that. And so we're trying to repurpose her for, for what we can do. Radios are going to stakeholders. We talked a little bit about the fact that we need to be better communicators amongst all of the security forces downtown, whether it's EPD or ambassadors or red hats or park police or, you know, whatever it may be, LTD, all of those different stakeholders. We have provided with some of our surplus radios, the ability to communicate. And with that communication comes more efficiency. It becomes a better coordinated effort downtown, which I think is important. And right now, we're working on a, an electronic solution to how we can memorialize, let me back up just real quick. I think what I'm seeing is a lot of duplicative efforts downtown. And so we're duplicating our efforts instead of complementing each other. And so what will happen oftentimes is somebody in a red cap will deal with maybe a chronic offender or some behavior. And then an hour or two hours later, EPD will be dealing with the same person and they'll have no idea that they're both dealing with the same person. And so we have certain individuals that have several bites of the apple because it's a fresh start every time they come across somebody new in a security type role. And if we can start memorializing who we're contacting and what we're contacting them with and share that information across the platform, then when, when we're coming in contact with these folks, we're able to say, hmm, that's interesting. We know that you just had the same conversation with the red caps where they told you to knock it off. And so now it's not a fresh start every single time. We can actually start holding people accountable for, for their behavior a little bit more Of course, court is a great success. We are at 10 hours a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, five hours each one of those days. I had a great conversation with Kahoots, I guess it's been a couple of weeks ago, about what that looks like to expand that a little bit and how much money we might be able to on a one-time basis expand that. I think there's a, there's a real key to being able to have the, the court response fill an awful lot of the gaps that we have downtown. And so this is always a piece of our success is, is the court, the court response or the community outreach response team is really, really important to us. And so I want to make sure that that was in here, letting you know that we are paying attention to that and that's something that we want to make sure we continue and enhance. And I would say downstream, when we're talking about a community-wide approach to community justice, I can see this type of program being really advantageous in our neighborhoods throughout the city that are dealing with some of the same problems. We are working on finalizing a contract now to solidify our jail beds in Springfield. Right now, we have 10. If my memory serves me correctly, we're working on an agreement to add capacity to that on an as-needed basis. And this is, this is an important piece of the accountability mechanism we have built in, especially for the repeat offenders, so that we have the ability to hold them accountable and they understand that there, there may be jail time, jail time tied to missing court or choosing not to show up for court, aside from our sentenced offenders. Right now, there is a belief and maybe an atmosphere of feeling like there's not a lot of accountability for those who FTA, fail to appear. And so we, we need to, we need to make sure we talk about what accountability mechanisms are in place with regards to our, especially our repeat offenders and making sure that, that through community, through our municipal court, that we have that as a, as an option for us. And then of course, a piece of technology that we've talked an awful lot about that I think is important, but it's just one important piece of many that we're doing, is having this in our toolkit, is the Guardian trailers or the portable video technology that we can deploy wherever we see a need or wherever we have a desire to, to put it based on a complaint basis. Right now, for instance, one of the great examples for me is trying to give some relief to Kathy and Matt Sigmund down at Gardner Floor Covering, who are really struggling, really, really struggling. And as many cops as I could put down there is only, is only as effective as, as when they're there and then when they leave is when the problems happen. And that would be maybe a great location for a little while to put one of these up just so we can keep an eye on what's going on for them so they don't feel like that they have to cinder block up the windows just to keep them from getting broken every single time. And I just, I call them out just because I've had a chance to meet with them personally and I've seen the emails and I just feel so badly that I can't meet those needs. And this might be, and I'm not saying that it would, but this might be a piece of, of technology that might help. And so I like, I like having an option like this available if we need it. And so the Guardian trailers are, are very overt, as you can see. It's not meant to be secretive at all. It's meant, it's meant to announce our presence being in the area. It's meant to announce our presence and our intent to kind of help, kind of take back the area, so to speak, and that we're paying attention. And there are pan-tilt zoom options on, on most of them, 30 days of data, and we would only keep evidentiary recordings as, as, as needed based on a case-by-case basis or incident basis. There's different things that I think, there's different parts of the Guardian trailers that I think could really help us, like add-ons with scene lighting for certain areas. And they're networked where you can put two or three of them up and they can network together so that we can actually have a 360-degree view from an entire event if we needed to as opposed to a standalone. And then as you can see here, they're just really nimble and mobile and we can, we can pull them down and stand them up very, very easily in different areas based on, based on, than, on the need. Here's an example of, of kind of how we would approach maybe from a, from an analytical point of view on where we would put the Guardian trailers. And I'm going to blow this up right here and this probably isn't a huge shock that this is, these would be spots that we would maybe start looking at putting them up. And, you know, these are, these are the hotspots and this is, we just use Person Crimes as an example to give us a, an example for, for council tonight. But, you know, we can analyze, you know, all kinds of data to try and address certain behaviors. But this probably isn't a big shock that these would be the three areas that we see hotspots in the downtown core. But, but there is some strong analytics to help us identify where those locations would go on top of the complaint basis that we would want to open up to our, to our downtown business and residential owners. Here's some examples of some cities that have utilized this and different areas and they're all over the map in sizes. Outgrow California is actually exactly the same size as us and they use it for just a ton of different examples. And they're, and they're great examples that I think articulate our, the flexibility that we could use these for. And, and you can see graffiti and street racists, nuisance crimes. You know, Las Vegas, of course, is all about tourists and tourist security or event security and we have all sorts of events that I think could be enhanced through that security. We've got a, a big one coming up here in, in a few years that are going to be, that's going to be important. Atlanta, Georgia does a lot of event security. The 10K runs is another one. With all of our, with all of our runs that we have, we, we have areas along all, all of the routes where our runners are that are a little bit of a public safety concern to make sure that there's not conflict between runners and motorists. And it'd be a great spot to put it up so that we can monitor from wherever we're at how, how the flow is going, whether or not they're safe as they're moving through that area or just keep things, keep things moving in a, in an orderly fashion. And so that's, that's another, another piece of that that I think is nice for these. This is just not all about surveilling bad behavior, it's about surveilling public safety and creating a safe environment for, for everybody. Here's a future vision of, of what we, we see on the horizon that are going to be really important for an awful lot of strategies, but specifically for the Guardian trailers. I think 2021 is a great example of multiple events throughout this entire community that we're going to want to be able to create safe environment for. Crime scene security for us, we could stand them up at a crime scene and, and we don't have to post officers on the crime scene. We could actually stand these up and from a remotely watch what's going on or, or record what's going on in the event that we have any issues, tactical use. We stand these up during a tactical event and, and have that total transparency of recording the entire event for, in the event that we need to, to go back and, and see what happened. And then a special event monitoring for the, a variety of the, of the events that we have. The, you know, the Whittaker Block Party and the huge fun in Sunday Streets, these are just examples of if they wanted to and they felt like they wanted to have some extra eyes down while they're doing that, we could bring, bring those down and put them up and they could feel really good about, about the security of their event if that's something that they've felt strongly about. So that's about it and I just wanted to get through that so that we could open it up for some dialogue. But my, my sincere hope is that as we move forward in the summer with, with the new fiscal year right around the corner is that we could continue to, to power through the RFP process that we're in now and, and identify some equipment that we think would be a good addition to, to our capabilities. And then, and maybe as a, as a kind of a pilot approach to this, start seeing if we can make some, or create some movement when, with respect to safety or the sense of safety starting in our downtown core, but also look for those unique opportunities outside of the downtown to really provide some cool value for the different neighborhoods that maybe have, have their own unique needs as well.
Great, that is very helpful and very informative. I already have Mike in the queue, Chris, Claire. We'll start with Mike.
Thank you Mayor, thank you Chief very much for that presentation, I appreciate it. One of the things that you just mentioned was a philosophical approach. The idea that we may, that while enforcement is a piece of this, it's not the, it's certainly not the silver bullet answer, sorry Alan. But, I don't know, I guess my question is, there are a series of, there's a spectrum of behaviors that I, in a perfect world, I would love to be able to address in our downtown. I, in a perfect world, I would love to be able to address in our downtown. They range from illegal to intimidating to nuisance. Okay? So my question is this, unless we're focused on enforcement, what's the way to deal with some of the things that are less than criminal, for example? And I guess my other question with that would be, would it be helpful to your officers downtown if we were to do some things legislatively that allowed for greater enforcement capacity, if that were the way to take it? And for example, I mean, friends of mine, I read a thing this morning about some friends who went down to go to dinner and the streets were, the sidewalks were just crowded with people sitting around and partying and doing drugs. And there's, you know, guys laying all over the place in sleeping bags. And literally, they had to walk over people to try to get to where they were going. So is it worthwhile for us to talk about blocking the sidewalk? And do we have a, you know, robust enough code around what the officers need to keep people from doing that? I guess you get the sense of what I'm asking you?
I sure do. So one of the challenges we have is not necessarily that the code isn't robust enough, because we are certainly, the city attorney's office has been fantastic about trying to get us to yes on all sorts of creative ways that we can have greater enforcement action. One of the challenges we have is the downstream capacity of, once we enforce these things, then what? Capacity in community court, capacity in municipal court, capacity for certain accountabilities if they reach a certain level and they become, it's become criminal behavior. Because that's what you really want your police officers to do first and foremost, is legislate criminal behavior. That's what they're there for. And one of the concerns is whether or not we have enough capacity downstream as we get people in the system to be able to handle it. Because if there's no accountability in that, then it's, you know, there's no reason, they're not going to change behavior in some respects. And so, you know, we talk about, you know, in our municipal court system, you know, we have the 15 beds at Lane County and 10 beds at Springfield, which we can expand. But, you know, a piece of the dialogue is probably centers around the philosophy in municipal court about whether or not jail is an option for some of these people or not. And in many cases, it's felt like it's not an option.
Right.
And when it's not an option, then prosecutors have no leverage with respect to any kind of plea agreements. And there's no incentive for people to not FTA four or five times. And so you just end up spending all your resources on the same people over and over and over and over again. But with regards to the municipal--
Give me, I'm going to jump in there.
Yeah, please.
How do we break that cycle?
It's a great question, but a delicate one.
If I could, just because in Springfield, for example, I'll say the thing that all my friends say to me. In Springfield, they don't have this problem. They have a jail and keep people accountable. So what do we need to do to be serious and get it done?
It's a good question, but a delicate one, because the, my experience has been in my career that everywhere that I've worked, that the bench has a certain philosophy that they feel comfortable with with regards to levels of incarceration or putting people in jail. And I don't have a sense from yet whether or not that's a part of the conversation as to what the municipal judge feels like should be in play with regards to accountability. I don't know. I don't know. I do know--
Judge Allen is a wonderful guy. I have always appreciated working with him, and I think he does a wonderful job, but he works for us. And if we need to have that conversation, I'm perfectly willing to have it. But I'm getting to a point with our downtown where I have to explain every single day why it seems the council won't do its job in the opinion of the people who are doing business downtown. And they see it as the council's problem. And I'm getting to a point where I'm willing to start getting very creative about this.
The, I would, I don't disagree with you, Counselor Clark, but the other thing I want to make sure that I do say is that jail isn't the solution for everybody. We want the right people in jail. We don't want, there's an awful lot of people we come into contact with that are chronic offenders that have other things that need to be taken into consideration, like mental health and substance abuse.
Sure.
But there are many of them that are the right people that, with the accountabilities of spending some time in jail, I think, could move us in the right direction. But like I said, I don't have a real sense yet of what the philosophy is around our municipal court and what's important or not, so.
I have five seconds. I can see making the manager uncomfortable, so I'm going to need a second round. It seemed like you wanted to say something there, too.
I do. And the only thing I wanted to mention was, is, you know, Judge Allen is engaged in these conversations. I do think part of it will be is he and his bench need to get comfortable with sort of moving forward with maybe a little bit different philosophy, but he is engaged in the conversations. I don't want to leave the impression that he is your employee, but he is actively engaged as well.
His judgment on where the line of appropriateness is what I was talking about.
Right. And he's engaged in those kinds of conversations as we continue to move down this community justice conversation, as well as with the downtown specifically now, so.
If I could just interject before the next person, the other part of this question is what's actually a crime? And so I don't know that we've established that someone lying on the street is a crime, so.
Right.
I mean, I think that's the other issue, is that what's bothering people going to a restaurant is not necessarily--
Right.
That's why these other options--
And, well, there is definitely, the downtown officers and all officers in this community are very good about understanding the spirit versus the letter of the law. And, you know, when we talk about our efforts, there's plenty of criminal behavior that need our attention, and some of the nuisance things that we're seeing downtown is just not getting addressed, probably as much as you would hope that it would get addressed. But a lot of the behavior that is making people uncomfortable, in my short time of experience, is not necessarily criminal. And so, you know, the question for me is, how do we, as a community, get engaged in this dialogue and hold each other accountable for the downtown? What kind of downtown core do we want? And there, and I had this conversation with a couple of different groups where we can certainly have the conversation with people about what's appropriate and what's not, and hold people accountable from a societal perspective, but there's other people that can have that same conversation. And I see an awful lot of people sometimes that just do not want to engage. And so, you know, and I've talked about, I talk about how people will cross the street and go the other side of the street without, and not walking down a certain side of the street and having the tough conversation. And it's easy for me to say that because I'm in uniform most days and, you know, I can have those conversations. So I'm not asking people to be confrontational, and I'm asking them to have good discernment about when they have those conversations and when they don't. But I think there are times where, you know, and I think our business owners are doing a pretty good job of that, where they're coming outside and they're saying, hey, look, you know, let's, you know, it's okay if you're here, but, you know, can you pick up after yourself? Can you, you know, can you move your stuff so people can walk by? 100% of all those conversations I've had with people that have been downtown have been very respectful and people have done what I've asked them to do with respect to that. My question is, is whether or not all of us as a community are having those conversations with people. I don't know. I don't know.
Chris.
Thank you. Really great presentation, and it incorporates a lot of the kind of things that I tend to support and believe in, especially the notion that human service and enforcement, public safety and human service are really two parts of the same whole. I've had conversations many, many, many times over the years with Steve Manella at Health and Human Services at the county about how we can find a human service and public safety approach to these issues. And I think that's really what you're talking about, is if an officer is to have a contact with somebody, is the appropriate response of that contact a public safety enforcement contact or is it a human service need contact? And I admire the fact that the EPD has the ability to, on the fly, try to decide which kind of contact that is. And I think that gets back to the notion of capacity. And capacity isn't just about jail beds. Capacity is about wet beds or other kinds of services. And if an officer has a contact with somebody downtown, knowing that they have a place where they can send them, maybe a jail bed, but it may also be a bed at Buckley House or a bed at one of the local treatment centers, I think is equally important. So we need to support across the board so that your officers have the appropriate place to send people, and we have to look at that as a totality. And I think that's what you're trying to do. And everything in the presentation said to me that's what you're trying to do. And so the notion of where is the line between one kind of behavior and another, between an enforceable infraction behavior and a human service kind of behavior, that's a very tough one. Just as the line between what I think is acceptable and what somebody else thinks is acceptable is also an individualized thing. And what one person says, everything on this side of the line is something I don't want and I want to figure out a way to get rid of it, the line may be a little different for someone else. And trying to figure out legally where that line is, I think, is a real challenge. I would like to see us do more things that are legally justifiable, but still try to deal with that. And that may not be your issue. That's probably the attorney's issue, and working together to figure out what some of those things might be. But I've said before, I'm not trying to turn downtown into Pleasantville. I don't think it's our goal to turn downtown into Pleasantville. I don't think we can ever achieve turning downtown into Pleasantville. But on the other hand, I don't want downtown to look like the second Back to the Future movie at Biff's Place. You know, that's also what downtown shouldn't look like. So trying to find where that line is, I think, is important, and it is a worthwhile conversation for us. I know that Judge Allen is working very hard on this issue, and I have worked with Judge Allen very hard on this issue, and I hope he will bring some options forward to us because we do have an interest.
Claire.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Chief. I'm very pleased with the approach you're taking, what you've presented here. It's collaborative, responsive to the specific issues that have been raised by downtown residents and merchants. You're incorporating the alternative justice approaches that the city has initiated in the past year or so, and, you know, acknowledging that we can't arrest people just for being jerks, but we should be citing or arresting people who are dealing drugs, recruiting teens into sex trafficking, and the other criminal activities we know are happening downtown. So I'm very pleased to see that you have a plan, or at least a desire, to bring investigators downtown, which are key to building a case against those criminals that can actually lead to prosecution. So that right there could make a significant difference in some of the activities downtown. It probably won't address the situation that Counselor Clark was referring to, and I had a question about that as well. We got, I think, we all received an email recently from someone who'd been downtown and had, you know, people were blocking the sidewalk, blocking the wheelchair ramp, according to this email. And the officer who happened by told the resident that there was nothing he could do about it, which obviously don't know if, you know, that is exactly how things occurred. But I would hope that our officers feel empowered to do exactly what you've said you've done, which is to, at least at the baseline, request that people not block things. You know, I think we do have a right to, you know, be able to walk down the sidewalk, and we need to learn how to share the sidewalks together. So I don't know if you want to respond to that.
I don't know if this is necessarily a response. An awful lot of the way we approach downtown is much the way we would approach somebody parked in the handicap spot at one of our favorite Starbucks, is that we probably don't jump out of our car and run and start ripping a citation and slap it on the windshield and say, shame on you for parking in there. We probably, and I'd like to believe, most of us have waited for the person to come out, engage them in dialogue, and say, hey, do me a favor, and just be very mindful that you're not handicap accessible, you're not, you don't have a handicap placard and this is not a place for you to park. And usually people are like, ooh, I got caught. Okay, won't do that again. That approach downtown is what we're seeing. And so somebody that's laying across the sidewalk or in front of a handicap ramp, my sense is, as an officer, can go to that person and say, hey, do me a favor and move your stuff over. We're not going to be quick to try and look for some kind of enforcement action, although the people that are frustrated, just like at the Starbucks that are standing there watching somebody get out of their car after pulling into the handicap stall, would love nothing more than for us to write them a $250 citation. We're probably not going to go down that path. So that's the little bit of the disconnect, is what the people that are frustrated with the situation feel like the remedy should be and what realistically the way we approach it, which is education first, compliance first, enforcement second. And so my understanding is that the majority, if not all of the contacts that we have downtown in those situations, if we engage in dialogue and ask them to move, they do move. But that doesn't necessarily mean it feels better to the person that's struggling with having had to call us in the first place, so.
Sure. Well, I appreciate that response. I think, in my mind, that is a better approach than giving citations to people for that. But I think we need to start encouraging and empowering our officers and our downtown ambassadors to have those dialogues and to start creating that atmosphere. Where people know that if they sprawl out in such a way, they are likely to be asked to change how they're sitting there. And then just a curiosity on the hours of the night shift. When you talked about night shift, if you had overstaffing capacity, what are the hours?
Well, we have several different shifts that come on at various times at night. And so on a case-by-case basis, if we're over minimums, then that can be anywhere, when I'd say night shift, it would mean all the way through our graveyard hours if we have overcapacity or overminimums on those patrol shifts, that we ask the extra, if we're too over, we would ask those extra two officers, hey, do us a favor and let's reassign you, kind of make downtown court kind of your beat. And so that can be, you know, into the evening hours, midnight, past midnight, all the way through the morning hours, depending on our staffing, so.
And then my last comment's actually directed at the city manager, and this is about our downtown ambassadors and parks ambassadors. And I just wanted to request and make sure, since it wasn't required in the job description, that they are well-briefed about our human rights office and our human rights codes and the services that people can receive there, and that they have some training around being able to identify when they might be witnessing a human rights violation. So, you know, street harassment, that might qualify.
Okay.
Jennifer.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify something I thought you said. If someone's downtown, I thought you said if they saw someone doing something they felt was inappropriate, instead of crossing the street and avoiding it, you would prefer if they engaged with that individual?
No, what I said is, all of us as we're downtown have, we all have an equal stake in kind of creating a fun and safe and downtown. And so I've encouraged people, if they see certain behaviors that make them uncomfortable, just if they feel comfortable, they can say something to that person. I mean, it's, if there's somebody that's standing there and they throw their litter on the ground, you know, using your good discernment, you can say, hey, you mind picking that up? You know, let's make the downtown clean for all of us. And so what happens is, is that when you start, when there's a level of accountability that we all kind of take some ownership in, it kind of starts to change behavior. And now, having said that, I'm not encouraging people to get into, you know, certain arguments with people, and you have to use your good discernment, but how many people that I've seen downtown that just put on the blinders and just don't do anything and don't say anything? And I'm just, I just think that from a cultural, from a societal perspective, there's an opportunity to kind of take over our downtown a little bit.
Yeah, I guess I would not give someone that advice, spending a lot of time downtown myself. I mean, it's sometimes difficult to discern whether someone is, has mental health issues, and your very simple statement of maybe you should not throw your litter on the ground could create a situation that you're not equipped to handle. I don't know. I just--
Fair enough.
Yeah. So my other question was more of a, I don't know this acronym. Where is it? Was like LP something? LPR?
License Plate Reader.
Oh. Good. Okay. Excellent. Well, thank you very much for this report. Thank you. License Plate Reader.
Any other comments? Alan, did you have anything? Did you need a second round or are you done?
Yeah, I kind of do, I guess.
Go for it.
Thank you. I had, I wondered about that comment, too, because Eugene Downtown Public Safety Report, there's a Facebook page where there are an awful lot of-- an awful lot of downtown business folks and a lot of folks who are engaged in our downtown will post things about their experiences there and videos of people breaking the law and other such things. One of the regular contributors to that is a young lady who talks about the, the fairly regular engagement that she gets verbally from, and the harassment that she gets, sexual harassment, as she walks by. That's fairly ubiquitous with a lot of women that have to walk in our downtown. And that, the way I just phrased that accidentally is really the, the point. Women that have to walk downtown, and that's the way they feel about it, rather than get to. And, and that's what I'm getting at, is that I, I'm hearing a lot of, oh, gosh, we can't, we can't get too heavy with enforcement, and we can't do this, and we can't do that. Where we are right now is completely unacceptable to me. Just absolutely, the, the environment in our downtown is completely unacceptable to me. I won't go there unless I have to, and I certainly would never go there with my kids. And I'm far from alone in that feeling. I, you know, an awful lot of people who live in, in my part of town, in North Eugene, would never go downtown unless they absolutely have to. And, and that seems to me to be something we ought to address differently. And I'm, that's one of the things that I'm looking forward to, the things you've put out today and trying some new ideas. I think that's awesome. But it sounds like this table has the same approach that we've always had or the same standard for behavior, and I'd like us to change it. And I don't, I don't know how, I don't know how best to affect that, I guess, other than to say, it's, it's not okay anymore with me. And I'd like it to be different. Now, does that mean maybe, I, I've thought of the creativity, after speaking with our city attorney, you can't stop people from panhandling, but we can make an ordinance that says you can't hand someone cash on the street unless you're buying something of physical, of a physical nature. Now, that's a, that's an ordinance we could make, and it would pass muster, wouldn't it?
That's not what I said. So, the, what we talked about was handing something out of a car, which is a traffic offense, and that is entirely, yeah, it's a safety issue. So, similarly, Springfield has an ordinance that-
Right. No, I get all that part, and I hope we do that, frankly. I'm talking about, because we, we can't regulate speech, we can't say, you can't stop people from asking for money. But my point was, you could stop saying you can hand someone money.
No. That, that's not my understanding at all.
Okay. Well, I guess my larger point is, I'm willing to be creative.
And I am, too.
Awesome.
Just not that creative.
Yeah, just not that creative.
All right. Well, then, where do we go for ideas on how we do this? That's my question. Is it, we, it's time for us to get busy with it, I think.
So, at the risk of completely alienating you on the ninth week of my-
It's all right, brother. It's all good. You can.
I'm leveraging the fact that we grew up in kind of the same area, and you'll give me a little latitude here.
Yes, sir.
And to, and to your point, which is well taken. It feels like we have an awful lot of people and families that are choosing not to be downtown that should be downtown. And I will always choose to have my family downtown because I want to have the ability to change downtown, and the way I do that is with my positive presence and the fact that I'm willing to say something. And that's just me. That's my own thing, and I'll do that with my kids. And so, with you abandoning downtown, then now you don't have a dog in the fight with me. And I want you downtown with your family. I want you to be the one that can say, hey, you mind picking your stuff up and making it clean for all of us? I think that's an important piece of this, is that more people are abandoning downtown, and I'm trying to get downtown activated with more of the right people downtown. And your family's the right people to be downtown. My family's the right people to be downtown. So, that's kind of what I mean by taking it over. It's not any different than what we do in our neighborhoods with Neighborhood Watch. We love our neighborhoods. We're willing to make the, we're willing to walk out on the sidewalk and say, what are you doing in my neighborhood? All day long. But we're not willing to sometimes have the tough conversations with somebody that we, that is not respecting our downtown core.
Yeah.
And so, there's a balance there. And I, and I don't ever want to leave, you don't have a chief of police that's asking you to get in confrontation and to create more problems. But I am, I am a, a chief that's going to ask you to, to come alongside me and help me fix this by having the right people downtown.
Makes sense. Thanks.
Chris?
Yeah, actually, what Mike was talking about kind of made an aha for moment for me about some other kinds of things that I've experienced in the community that are not just downtown and not just people laying on the sidewalk. But, you know, I think it really gets to a much larger issue of civil behavior on a larger scale. And I know that we're trying to figure out, well, what is, what is a thing we can do legally about certain behaviors downtown that we don't consider to be acceptable? Harassment, intimidation. We're trying to struggle to find the words to describe them, but I can go to a public meeting in some parts of town and I'll get harassment and intimidation. In fact, I'll get physical threats. Well, does that constitute harassment? Does that constitute a physical threat? But everyday citizens in Eugene feel entitled to go there because of some factor that's, that it's not, they're not downtown. They're just at a public meeting in Eugene. But there's some sort of a sense of entitlement that has begun to grow with youth, with, with travelers, with people downtown, but also with just general members of the public that is very kind of disquieting, that the incidence of, of harassment, intimidation, and threats in general has increased for me to an absolutely unacceptable level. And I would like to figure out, and I'm not charging the police with trying to figure out how to do this, but not just downtown, but in the community as a whole, how can we become a more civil, thoughtful, caring community where we don't feel the need, as we drive down the street, to give everybody the finger because they got in our way? Or to yell out my car window every foul swear word I can think of? Or go to a public meeting, and if you don't agree with me, I unload on you? It's, it's-
Or make the assumption that homeless youth are predatory sex offenders.
You know, or, or whatever assumptions people want to make. I think we need to find a way where downtown and everywhere else, we can start to act in a more thoughtful and civil way, where we start to interact with each other that doesn't need to involve harassment, intimidation, threats, simply because I don't agree with you. And that seems to be what it boils down to. If you don't agree with me, then you are somehow open to be the, the, the subject of whatever I want to unload on you. And, and if, if that's related to what's happening downtown, then maybe our solution needs to try to figure out how to deal with that. I think there are people who come to Eugene who have that sense of entitlement, and we need to figure out ways we can deal with that sense of entitlement. I can flop down in downtown on the sidewalk, say whatever I want. I can insult people walking down the street, say whatever I want. That's not okay. I realize it may be legal, but it's part of a larger problem that we need to figure out how to deal with. And maybe you can have a little piece of it, maybe you can have a little piece of it, and maybe we can have a little piece of it. But I think we need to turn this into a nicer community, and, and that would go a long way towards getting us, I think, the behavior we're looking for.
Try being a Republican.
So, I, I just, I kind of wanted to echo that and say, you know, one of the ways we've talked about this a lot is this sort of broader scope of the sort of broken social contract, like this social contract about our civic behavior is lost. But I actually very much appreciate that the different points of, at which you are choosing to address this, and there is that point of saying, we have eyes on the street, we have ways of tracking what's going on. And so, some of this really nuisance behavior that's not illegal, we will be empowered to respond to it. You'll know it's happening. So, it feels to me that this is not the same old, same old. This is actually a, a new level of investment and energy that's going into a multi-pronged strategy downtown. And so, I, you know, am eager to see how that plays out. And I think that as a council, the other role that we have is really around that social contract and around public meetings and about how we engage in discourse about the issues before us. So, we have our role to play, and you have yours. Thank heavens. And so, I think that, unless there are other comments, I think that we are complete. So, thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I believe that closes this meeting.